Okay, good, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the February 23rd workshop and special city council meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website. If you join this meeting using any other link, we would ask that you log out and then log back in using that website. Public comment on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@louisstonmain.gov prior to or during the meeting. Members of the public who are logged in to the meeting online can make a comment when invited to do so by using the raise hand. And councils are asked to raise their hands as well. With that, we'll go right into our workshop, and the first item is from our city assessor in reference to reevaluation presentation. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. And Dennis, do you want to introduce the director and lead the way?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. You've got Bill Healy, our chief assessor for the city of Lewiston. He's going to give you a brief overview of assessing in the city of Lewiston, as well as talk a little bit about the possible revaluation that's upcoming here in the coming years. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Bill and have Bill take us away. Bill, you should be able to share your screen to get your presentation up.
Great, thank you. All right, can you all see my screen?
We can.
Okay, great. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight. My presentation is going to focus on Lewis and tax assessments, how they compare to state guidelines, and the impact that a revaluation might have on values and the assessment tax rate. You're going to hear the word assessment ratio a lot tonight. The assessment ratio is a measure of how accurate our assessments are as compared to sale price. It's simply a calculation where you divide the current tax assessment by the sale price of a property. So that we have standards that we have to follow. They're in statute. The maximum assessment ratio was 110%. The minimum assessment ratio was 70%. Of course, ideal is 100. Maximum level of assessment quality is 20%, and the ideal level of assessment quality is 10. We are currently at 76% our assessment ratio, and our level of assessment quality is 11%, which is very good. That means most sales are falling within 11% of the 76% ratio. If I get going too fast, please slow me down. So something that I wanted to show you guys tonight is how the tax rate is actually calculated. After you vote and pass the budgets and the appropriations are reduced by non-property tax revenues, we take that net to be raised and divided by a taxable valuation. In fiscal '21, you can see we had to raise $55,454.670. It's simply divided by our total taxable valuation, and that's how we arrive at 2867. What I wanted to illustrate here is obviously the higher the valuation, the lower the tax rate. So there's a couple of numbers that we deal with regularly in the assessing office. First is the actual assessment ratio, and then there's a certified assessment ratio. The state allows an assessor to pick a ratio that's within 10% of the actual ratio. So we use 84% fiscal '21, even though our assessment ratio was 76%. We have to factor all exemptions and personal property by that number. So I wanted to, again, illustrate what, how that impacts the, especially here, the homestead exemption. For the last few fiscal years, you can see that even though the exemption is 20,000, we have to factor it down in fiscal '19 by 88% to 17.6. The state will only reimburse us at that amount. So that's why, as much as we'd like to give the full exemption, we just can't do it. What I wanted to show you here is how the assessment ratio breaks out by class. Residential properties are 43% of our tax base, and their assessment ratio currently is 76%. Commercial property is 37% of our tax base and have a ratio of 81%. Industrial, 6%, 81%, and utilities are 14% and have a ratio of 94%. This next slide is the state valuation and full value tax rates. So we have our actual valuation that we're using, and the state calculates our full value based on homesteads, bedding exemptions, and they factor it up based on sales. What I wanted you to see is, even though our tax rate, 2891, 2867, you can see that, in reality, it's really more like 2350 on average. I think that's important because we hear a lot about how high the tax rate is in Lewiston. If our values were at full market, then we certainly would be much lower. Here, I want to give a comparison. I'm sorry for the busy screen. I know it's kind of all over the place, but what I want to illustrate here is, if you look at the full value tax rate in FY '20, we were 2891. The full value tax rate in Lewiston is 2318. And you can see in Auburn, it's 2221, but our 2318 is much closer than you would think at, you know, our current rate. And then if you go down, you can see, again, we hear quite often about how high Lewiston's tax rate is. But again, it's in direct relation to how far off our assessments are from market value. I want to give you some examples of what would happen if we did a revaluation currently. If the tax rate were to drop 24%, as that's the, so our average assessment, 76%, so the rate could drop 24%. So I wanted to show you current valuation of a home, and 110 is our average assessment. You subtract the 21,000 homestead, you end up with a net taxable value of 89,000 times our tax rate, you arrive at 255163. If we factored the new valuation to market, we'd be 144.7. You'd have full value homestead, so then you're at 25, and your net would be 119.7. So if our tax rate were to drop to 2179, it's about a $50-some-odd difference. But as you can see, if the value increases, excuse me, if the tax rate decreases at the same percentage as the valuation increase, property taxes will remain relatively stable. Using another example, even only 5% difference, using the same method, same model. 110 minus the 21 for a net of 89, current 255163. But if we don't drop the tax rate accordingly, you can see even 5% difference of 2322, taxes go up by $200. So again, trying to illustrate the fact that the increases in value have, the decrease in the tax rate has to be equal or close to the increase in the valuation. Here's another example, a little bit higher home price, 240,000. Again, factored homestead at 21 for a net of 219, current taxes 627873. The new valuation for this property would estimate at 315.8. The homestead would be full value at 25,000 for a net of 290,000, 29800. Times the reduced tax rate, you'd be looking at, like I said, just about a $50 difference in taxes. And again, tax rate decreases at the same percentage of the valuation, property taxes remain nearly the same. Jumping onto the next screen, again, with the same illustration. If we can't drop the rate accordingly, you're going to see a tax increase. There's no way around it. So those were two examples of residential properties, but I'd like to show you now is a commercial property. Current valuation times the tax rate, you'd have 800,000 times 2867, be about 22,936. Fact it up, because commercials at 81%, your new value would be 97.7. Times the reduced tax rate, the commercial properties would actually see a reduction. And that's because they're already at a percentage that is closer to market value than residential properties. I'd like to discuss the CMP corridor and how that could impact the total taxable valuation in the city. It's projected at 304 million plus in the city. It could reduce the tax rate by an additional 10%. And as I mentioned, obviously, if, all things being equal, the net to be raised, if we have a higher taxable valuation, then the tax rate's going to be lower. I threw an example in here, too. You can see that, again, using the model we've already used, 110,000 minus 21,000 homestead, net taxable value of 89,000, times 2867, we arrive at 255163. Now, again, 144.7, the equalized value, full value homestead, so your net taxable is 119.7. We could reduce the tax rate by additional 10% with the 304 million from the CMP corridor. I think that what, I'm trying to illustrate here is how important it is that we recognize that that could really be beneficial in this, in moving forward with a revale. If we use the funds from the CMP corridor to help lower the tax rate, a revaluation tax burden would be minimal on most property owners. My last slide here is, I just wanted to show you current total tax valuation, if nothing else, if we did nothing else. And you just add the 304 million from the CMP project, we would bring our taxable valuation up to 2.2 billion. Using the same net to be raised, we could have a tax rate without doing a revale of 2477. So I just wanted to illustrate how impactful that 304 million from the CMP corridor is. I hope I didn't go too fast. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Feel free, shoot away.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you. Can we drop the screen?
You want to drop screen? Okay.
Prefer to ask my questions to people than the screen.
Sorry.
Um, okay, that was very fast, but I think, I think I'm with you. Um, so you, you referenced the CMP project as part of the tax rate decrease. What are other ways the tax rate would decrease?
Well, if we do a revaluation, the tax rate is going to decrease. If we find ways to increase the total taxable valuation, the tax rate will decrease. Short of any new major project coming online, I don't see it happening where we could lower the tax rate dramatically without either revaluation of the CMP project.
Okay, and as TIFs kind of, the terms expire and projects go to full value, would that help too? Probably not like the most, but.
Well, it does. It does help. Because obviously, those projects that are coming, that are TIF now, they're going to come off TIF, that taxable valuation will be then picked up in the general fund.
Okay. Okay, I just, I feel like this is going to be hard to explain to everyone in the city. You know, I feel like people are going to want very specific examples of how it's going to impact them directly. And so I'm just trying to think of, I mean, I'm supportive of moving forward with this. I think it's due time, and especially if the CMP project pushes us to the wrong side of the ratio, we have to do it. So I'm all for this, but I'm just trying to identify the best way to talk about this with residents, constituents, and neighbors.
I've been through a few revaluations in my career. It's never popular. It's never easy. All we can say, it's a lot easier to explain an assessment to somebody when it directly relates to market value. Most people understand what their home is worth and have a good idea what their home is worth. And we're seeing houses that are selling for 150,000 right now. They're assessed for 80,000. Again, the average is what I told you. We have numbers on both sides that are skewed either way. It's hard for someone to understand how their assessment could be 80,000 when they paid 150. And then they look at the tax rate and don't understand that the tax rate is artificially higher because our values are low. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I mean, I'm a pretty new homeowner, and you know, when I looked at the valuation on the, on the website, I was like, why am I paying $40,000 more for this house, even it's not actually valued at that? So I spent a lot of time back then trying to figure it out. I think for newer homeowners, it's definitely a big surprise, at least it was for me. I think my parents had to explain it multiple times to finally get there and understand what the difference was. But I think being able to cite, as we do the revaluation, the tax rate will decrease. So those are somewhat correlated. That's helpful.
We are getting closer to the minimum assessment ratios established by the state. The state is not going to come in here and force you to do a revaluation, but they're going to obviously try to push us in that direction. And it just, like I said, the further you get away from market value, the greater the chances for inequity in assessments. And that's obviously, in assessing equity is what we care about. Equity trumps value in most cases. So we're always trying to make sure that we're, you get everybody about the same level of assessment ratio. And it's, like I said, it's easier to explain, it's easier to understand, and it eliminates a lot of inequities.
Okay, thank you so much.
Bill, when you spoke about the, the net project, was that at full, that was taken every penny we get from, from?
That is correct. That is correct.
Which, which I'm not sure is realistic, considering some of the major infrastructure and other issues that we have to deal with. But, but I, you know, I'm hoping that when the time comes, we do consider property taxpayers significantly in that process. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
All right, just processing all of this live. And so it sounded like residential properties would have more of a tax impact than business properties. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Maybe that's an economic development tool to incentivize businesses to be here. Or am I way off base on that one?
No, it, obviously, it's, it's a shift that, that nobody really likes to see, but it's reality. They're at a higher percentage of market value than the residential property, so that there will be a shift from commercial to residential. I just think that, as far as economic development, I can't speak for that, but I can say that they feel like they'd be treating more fairly, possibly than they are right now. When you see the numbers, you know, 81% versus 76, that's, you know, that's pretty significant. However, just to defend the assessment, we have a 10% variance that we can go by. So we're within 10% of each ratio, right? So 76 and 81.
Okay, that's super helpful.
Because by law, we're supposed to treat all taxpayers equally. So as long, but you're saying, as long as we're within that 10%, we stay within that legal area.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Finance Director Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going back to Counselor Ray's question on the homeowners and how to explain it. Typically, when we see taxpayers come in to pay their tax bills, that's the amount that they focus on, not necessarily the valuation of their home. I would venture to guess, most people don't know what the valuation is on their tax bill. They just know what they're writing the check for. So to avoid, as Bill mentioned, his experience with revaluation, the unpopularity of shifting valuation to the single-family homeowner, which is your largest population, if you will, in when you allocate your types of tax bills up. That would be the time that we would want to capture, at least holding it constant during that capturing the CMP project. Because that's going to allow the tax rate to drop at least close enough that they're going to be paying relatively the same amount in their tax bill, even though their values increased. It's that inverse relationship. That's, that's probably the easiest way to explain it. There's that inverse relationship, and with the CMP project, it brings up enough value that allows us to adjust those value and as a whole, still have a tax rate at least static for the single-family homes. And that's the important piece of it.
And I think it's just really important that we say clearly that this money, we're not counting on this money. We're hoping for this project, I think. Most of us, I think, if not all of us, but, but I don't want the public to think we're counting those eggs in the basket yet. Because I think there's a process. Counselor Ray and then Counselor Khalid.
Thanks. Sorry, I also just wanted to ask a little bit more about the homestead exemption. Could you explain what the parameters are for that, and then how many residential units do we, like, what percentage in Lewiston are folks taking advantage of that?
Well, off the top of my head, I'd say about 70% of homeowners take advantage of it. It's a program that the state offers. If your home is your primary residence, and of course, the guideline, you have to have lived in it any year prior to April 1st, you have to be an owner of the property. It's a pretty significant reduction. Right now, it's about $600. And again, that one, it's going to change a lot because the value of the homestead, we go to 25 versus the current 21 at a higher rate. But it is helpful, and obviously, right now, we have about 6,100 people that are benefiting from the homestead.
Yeah, I just think, as we couple the conversation, if we do move forward with this, I think.
And we try, we really do try to notify any new property owner of the exemption and also.
I think you emailed me, Bill, as soon as I thought my house. So yes, you're, you're definitely on it. I was just like, okay, great, I will pull this out. So they don't do it, even though I took a first-time home with Empire's last, they don't really explain any of this, and you have to kind of figure it out as you go. So I'm just trying to relate that experience as someone who's newer to this.
And you said a percentage of folks are taking advantage of it.
There are some. We try to notify, we used to do a direct mailing to everybody who wasn't getting the homestead every year, which you can only tell them so many times. So what we've done is, we've actually put it in the paper now. We try to post it on the website, and again, when we're out doing inspections, we try to inform all the property owners, if they don't have it, that they should take advantage of it. Some people think it's income-based, and it's not.
All right, thank you. Counselor Khalid, I'd see your hands back down. Are you all set?
No, I was just going to make a comment about the CMP corridor, how we shouldn't, you know, put all our hopes in there because we don't know how that project will go. And maybe, I don't know, William, if you're able to give us an update of where that project is, if it's going to, I don't know. Where they at, I don't know, because it may be, it may, you know, since we are putting too much hope into the CMP project, then I think residents would be, would find it really helpful to know how that is going. Yeah.
Do you have any insight?
I do. I think Dennis wanted to look like he was ready to chime in on that now. Well, only what I read today is that they have enough votes to bring it to referendum. I do know that CMP has taken out permits and has already started working on the facility in Lewiston. At the very least, the upgrades they're doing is going to give us some type of increase in valuation. Of course, as, as you've all mentioned, there certainly is no guarantee that, that this is actually going to go through. I think what I was trying to make the point is that if it did, and we used it appropriately, that we could mitigate any type of tax increase for most property owners.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and I think Counselor Ray mentioned this, but like, I saw that residential tax would likely increase, or like, there's a big difference between the commercial and industrial tax versus residential. And I just feel so, I think it's just inequitable and unfortunate that residents have to pay more taxes than, than businesses.
And, right, and I understand your point, and what the revaluation would do is just redistribute the tax burden, and it would put everyone on the same playing field, if you will. So right, right now, as much as we hate to shift any type of tax, it's just that, right now, the commercial is paying a higher percentage.
Yeah, yeah. My last comment or question is, so the last one was tabled in 2006. Do we know why that, that was?
I think Heather does.
At that time, we were getting ready to implement, and then the recession started. So we did not want to put it in place and find out that our valuations actually exceeded the 110% on top of everything else. So everything was put on pause at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a side note, this whole project, I realize we shouldn't be looking at any sort of windfall from it, but noticing today that they do have the signatures for the petition. But in looking at it, it would almost appear to me that this might be labeled the Lawyers Economic Recovery Act of 2021. They're talking about a retroactive enactment date. I, I would think this would fly right in the face of both the state and federal constitutions, the ex post facto thing. How can you postdate something like this? I, I don't know. It's going to be an interesting legal question. I'm sure that the lawyers from both sides are the ones that are going to make out on it. But I don't think it's, it's a sure bet that it's going to go either way at this point in time. I mean, the Supreme Court of Maine threw it out last time. Who knows what's going to happen? It's, it's, it's still very iffy. It'd be probably a great thing for Lewiston if it does come about. But certainly, I don't think we want to plan on it until we have a little more sure footing than what we have now. And I'm hoping that maybe we can get this presentation, the PowerPoint, perhaps email to us. And that's going to be a great thing. It's, it's, I just had one constituent concern over the weekend. He opened up with the, the new branding, and then he went on to taxation. I'm sure once we start talking about revaluation and everything, every place that I've lived or worked over the years, when revaluation has come up, it becomes a hot-button issue. Everybody thinks that it's a grab for their wallet, and it isn't necessarily so. It's, it's having to do with equity. And I, I hope we're able to have information such as this so that we can perhaps calm some of these people down before they, they go off the end, so to speak. This gentleman that, that spoke with me just couldn't understand. Apparently, it was very unpopular last time. It was tabled because of that, and we'll get it tabled again, you know. But people just, I don't think, understand. I was always told, I don't know whether Mr. Healy will agree with this or not, but over the years, I've always been told, basically, a revaluation, you're going to see a third of the people, their taxes will go up, a third of the people, their taxes will go down, and roughly a third of the people, their taxes will remain approximately the same. I don't know if that still holds true or not, but.
That is very, very accurate. That's typically what you see.
And that was a gentleman by the name of Donald Dyer, I think, was assessor in Auburn at the time. He came to Augusta. He was in the business many, many years. And he went through a couple of revaluations in Augusta, and I think, basically, I've been on the increase two out of three times, and one time, it stayed the same. So, you know, I'm hoping maybe this time will go down to even things out. But everybody wants that, but only a third of them are going to get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from councils? All right. Thank you, Mr. Healy. Much appreciated. Good job on the PowerPoint.
Thank you, and I'm happy to share that. Dennis, I can put it out tomorrow to you, and then, sound good?
Sounds good, Bill. Please.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item B, a review of the electrical permit fee schedule.
And I'll just do a brief introduction, Mayor, while Dale moves in. David Hediger, Director of Planning and Code. He'll present some changes, proposed changes to our electrical permit fee schedule and have a discussion, you know, with you and the council looking for feedback, and if this is supported, and once that direction, it would come back at a later time for action at a regular council meeting. So I believe, about enough time for Dave to come in and.
Kyle Sheehan will be joining with him as well.
Okay, get Kyle Sheehan, get Dave Hediger, Director of Planning and Code, and Kyle Sheehan, our electioneers in the city as well. So I'll turn it over to them for the presentation.
All right, thanks, Dennis. So, yeah, we've been talking on and off about adjusting the fees for all of our permits, electrical building, plumbing, zoning and land use, on and off for several years, and the timing never seems right. Some of our fees haven't been updated since 2010. In this case, the electrical fees were last updated in 2014. During this whole pandemic situation, I've had staff look at the building permits, the electrical permits, and see if there's better ways that we can be maybe more efficient with how our applications are filled out, where we can get better information from the applicant that makes our job easier, maybe it makes their job easier in filling it out, and as part of that, reevaluating our fee structure as well. Just to make it simpler for everybody, people at the front. Just to make it simpler for everybody, people at the front desk, the applicants, staff, for everyone to understand this. So tonight we brought the electrical fee schedule in front of you. I've asked Kyle Sheehan to join us. Kyle's been the electrical inspector since September of 2019. He's doing a great job and he's actually worked on updating the electrical permit. I did not give you folks a copy of that necessarily, but the new permit would correspond with these fees that we're talking about tonight. For background information, what I've given you is the existing fee structure and then a couple of tables here. One of them is the proposed electrical fee schedule that shows a comparison of both proposed and existing fees. And then we tried to show what our fee structure might be, or excuse me, what our revenue would be coming in based upon the current fee schedule, what inflation has been, if we kept our rates at the same, like what, what that new fee number should be. And then the proposed permit fee. Certainly we're higher than inflation is. And I guess my point, throwing that in there is that could we have just adjusted for inflation? We could have. But some of the research Kyle has done has shown that even with the fee increases we're talking about, they're reasonable. There's still less than a lot of other communities that Kyle's looked into. We added on that sheet too, as well as a typical number of inspections that would occur there, just to give people an idea of how many times Kyle is going out to one of these properties to do an inspection. And those are just averages. I mean, it could be more or less, but it gives you a ballpark idea. Going back to the comparison sheet where it has the proposed and existing. I guess just to add some explanation to this, if you're looking at this and then you look at our existing fee schedule. It's apples and oranges in the sense that some of the categories have changed. And when we come forward to you folks with the building permit and zoning and land use, you're going to see some changes there too. So it's not a line by line item where you can say, oh, it's $35 and now it's $40. That may be the case in some situations. Other times we're just coming up with a whole new category. Again, that's an effort to get staff better information from the applicant as to what actual work is being performed. And maybe make it actually easier for the applicants to actually fill out the, the application. I think Kyle will tell you that a lot of times the information we're getting. You know, we're taking the applicant's word for it and he may go out in the field and find that what was represented on the permit and what in the field is two very different things. Where there is a NA in the existing column, not applicable. That's because we don't have a specific fee for that now. So if you go down this and you see some things in there for like solar renewable energy sources. We don't have a fee, specific fee for that now. We're kind of making one up, putting it into another category. But given the amount of activity we're seeing in renewable resources, solar specifically, we're coming up with a fee structure for that. I think that's really it. What we're looking for is any guidance, suggestions, questions you folks might have, so that way we can bring this forward. And also we're kind of using this as a feeler so we can get a sense as to what kind of information you folks might be looking to. When we come forward with the other permit fee adjustments as well.
Kyle, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that was great. I think Dave got point across with everything that we were trying to do. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. So Dave, how many, how many fee increases in different areas are you expecting?
With respect to electrical, I mean, if you, if you look at that.
No, I'm talking outside of electrical. So you said there are other permitting.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So yeah, right now, electrical fee, building, plumbing, we can do a little bit with. Some of that is driven by the state. So we have to be conscious about the increases that we would look at there. Zoning and land use.
All right. So you know, I'll leave this discussion for the council, but one concern I have is that if we, if we break this up into pie meal, piecemeal, it's going to feel like, you know, constantly changing and increasing fees versus doing it all at once for all permitting. It's just, we're going to go through a year of constant increases, it'll seem, and that, that I think may concern some of our constituents.
Yeah, no, our intent is really to come back to you within the next couple of weeks with those other, other fee increases. We're working on them right now. It's a conversation I've been having with Dennis as to which date we're going to come back and see you folks with that.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
I just wanted to say this was super easy to understand and I just appreciate the work and I just wanted to. In case folks don't know, Kyle is an LRTC graduate, I think. So I'm keeping them within our own city, which is great.
Great. Counselor Clement? You're on mute.
What it is with that button? Anyway, just a quick question from the chair here. I would hope that that's not what it is, but is this to imply that somebody wants to replace a faulty switch or a faulty receptacle? They have to fill a permit at the rate of $40 or is there, is there some latitude? I mean, I, I don't imagine the homeowner that replaces a a faulty switch or a faulty receptacle bothers in every instance to pull a permit. I know that I always had issues in the past between plumbing and electrical and plumbing permits were much stiffer in the jurisdictions where I worked. They were much more enforced. But electrical is the one that caused the greatest property damage and even death by fire. So, but I just noticed this and it struck me as being, I can't believe that that would be the case, but.
So that's actually the case today. Whether that actually happens, to your point, whether or not somebody actually gets that permit is a whole nother story. So if you want to, and Kyle, Kyle and I just had this conversation today. You're a homeowner and you're fixing the ceiling fan and you're in your living room. And you go to the lows to get it. You're probably doing this over the weekend and you probably don't think you need a permit. Technically you do. Technically it's a $32 permit today. With these changes, it would go up to $40. Is the average homeowner in town getting a permit? Probably not. And we wouldn't know. We'll never know. Now, that said, you know, to your point, the risk safety issues associated with that. In an ideal world, they do it correctly. They don't, there's a fire, there's an investigation, they find out that that fan was put in by the homeowner, they find out that a permit wasn't obtained. That's probably going to be an issue maybe for that person and their insurance. How often does that happen? I don't know, you know, but you're absolutely right, Counselor Clement. I mean, that's, that's, that's the intent of what it is. That's what it has been. And the adjustment would be from 32 to $40. I don't know if you have anything to add to that maybe, Kyle?
No, I think that was, that was exactly how I will say it as well.
And how, how long have we been doing it? I mean, how long has the expectation that if somebody's changing a switch, they need to get a permit? Is that since we've adopted the, the national standards?
I'd have to look at when we have specific language in, so we enforce the National Electric Code. I'm not sure which year that is. Kyle could let me know, but there's specific language in our ordinance, the local ordinance that says that a permit is necessary. I think Kyle, you could speak to what the state's expectations are, I think, right? As far as those types of improvements.
Right. So the state doesn't require a permit for one, two family dwelling, anything that's, that's done there. They don't require permits, but they still have the expectations that, you know, qualified people are doing, doing the work. They do have a state statute allowing, you know, for replacements of switches. But they don't allow replacements of, say, receptacles because receptacles, there's a little bit more to it. They have, you know, certain locations. They need, you know, GFC protection, tamper resistant, any, any sort of thing like that. So they, they don't allow for, you know, general incidental replacements of those items.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Thank you, Dave and Kyle.
So our intent for the council is we're going to do something similar with the other other fee structures. And then I would suggest, I guess to the mayor's point. Once we have presented all those in a workshop, we would bring them all at once, you know, for a public hearing. And we want to try to get this done, you know, in the next several weeks, so to speak, because it's important for budget purposes, because Heather needs to come up with a projected revenue based upon these new numbers. So you'll see us here again, probably a couple, couple more times in the month of March.
Good. Thank you, Dave. But so one, one quick question. In your second, in your first paragraph, second sentence, it says the revisions are being made in an effort to make the permitting process easier for the applicant and staff, of course. Can you just briefly, is it, what's making, what is, what are we doing that would make it easier for the applicant? Besides raising fees?
Nope, absolutely.
I might be off from that question as well, Dave.
Yeah, go for it, Kyle.
For the, for the applicant, we've kind of consolidated some of the categories. So some of the categories used to, you know, require, you need to come in with the information of how many kilowatts of, say, a generator, how many kilowatts that, that produces. And then every fraction there, they would be charged different rate. But we tried to consolidate that down to, you know, one fee. Okay. If there's a generator, great. There's a flat fee for a generator or like a transformer. So they don't need to come in with so much detailed, you know, information just to pull their permit. And hopefully, we anticipate that's going to be much easier for contractors and make it more accurate information.
On the, on the single family side, you want to speak to that, Kyle? Because that's a big change there.
Yeah. So on, on one and two family dwellings, we are changing the permit. So it does say, let me open this up real quick. It's going to be very simplified. So the average homeowner, if they do plan on doing their own electrical work, they can they can easily, you know, identify what they're trying to do. And they'd be able to, you know, get their permit for it. They for the replacement or install of new circuits, they'll, they'll have to pay their $40 fee up to a 50% alteration of their electrical system. And then we've altered, let's say, the new home fee from $58 to $75. Which is, it's a little bit of an increase, but comparing to some other municipalities, they, they actually have completely different structures. To go by square footage. So say an average 2,000 square foot house would be about $140 for a permit in those municipalities. So we still seem to be coming in under on that sense.
We're, we're, it'll make it a little easier too, with respect to the, the, the one and two families, which, you know, we took into consideration because I shouldn't say I'm less concerned about commercial applications, but you know, those are, tend to be bigger permits. More sophistication involved with the one and two families. We used to say, oh, how many outlets are you replacing or how many openings are you doing? In the electrician, you know, you're doing a renovation in the kitchen and like, oh, I don't know, a half dozen or 20 or, you know, they're just throwing a number out there. We're not asking for that anymore. It's going to be a simple fee. If you're renovating, doing a renovation and it's less than 50% of an alteration to the electrical system, it's 40 bucks. Kyle's going to figure out when he goes there, they're going to give us a little more information on the application anyway, as far as the description. Versus telling us specifically how many openings and openings are, are holes in the wall, basically, right? You know, light switches, plugs. Ceiling fixtures, things of that nature. So that'll be a lot easier for them to, to obtain at that point. And that's just you as the homeowner too, because the electrician might have a better idea. Although a lot of them don't, they're, they're just, they're going into it and they're going to kind of make the improvements as they go along. But you as the homeowner, you have to put less thought into it actually is what it's going to come down to. I know I need an electrical permit. If I'm going to do some improvements this weekend in my garage, great. Get us a permit with a simple description. You'll be good to go.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item C, an update from the Lewiston Housing Committee.
Mayor, City Councils, I'll just introduce Ally Smith as she's a representative on the Lewiston Housing Committee and she'll be doing the Housing Committee update this evening. So Ally's in, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over. Ally, take it away.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ally Smith. I'm here as a representative from the Lewiston Housing Committee. Thank you all for your time tonight. Am I all set up to share my screen? Great. Okay. Wish me luck. All right. Is everyone able to see this?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So the focus of my presentation tonight is first to provide our overall feedback and recommendations on Dale's presentation regarding services for the homeless in our community. And secondly, to move on to discussing the overall role of the housing committee and our next areas of focus. So to start, we just want to say that we really appreciate all of the work that Dale and city staff have put into responding to our initial slate of recommendations. We're really excited to see a lot of this movement. And generally we're supportive of these proposals. We have some specific feedback that I think really mirrors and echoes much of the conversation that took place here on February 9th. So I'll move through those. First, regarding the temporary warming shelters, you know, overall, we were really in agreement with the mayor and others on this committee who wondered if the same sort of resources that would be allocated towards this model could instead be directed towards a resource center. Some sort of ventilated indoor space where people can also access other resources and get connected to other services. It seemed like there was pretty widespread agreement on this body, on that topic during your last meeting. So I won't labor this point overly. What I will say is that should the city decide to pursue this model, we would really recommend speaking with service providers in the community who work with the homeless before pursuing this strategy, although it seemed to me that this was not, I'm going to move forward. So I'm going to move on to the, the next subject. But happy to answer questions about this later, if this is still under consideration. Regarding the public restrooms, we are strongly supportive of bringing more permanent public restrooms to our community. Like others, we had some questions about this specific design, although my understanding from Dale is that alternatives are being explored and that we'll be able to see some options. So not so worried about that. But overall, just want to really reiterate that this is important, not just now, under COVID, where obviously public health and sanitation are of paramount concern, but also long-term, this is a huge asset for our community and this is a role that really gets filled right now predominantly by the library. And it's a role that we would love to see permanently supported by the municipality via some continued public restrooms. In terms of the sanitation and shower facilities, we think this is a great idea. Again, not just in terms of public health, although of course that is very important. But what we see is, you know, for people who are experiencing homelessness, who may have a job interview or be seeking other services. Having the ability to take a shower and, you know, feel good about yourself in the way that you're presenting yourself in that moment. And to, you know, not bear sort of the visible signs of not having access to sanitation facilities can be really important. And it's, you know, it's a huge piece of treating people with dignity. So we're really happy to see this proposed. The one concern is having these facilities managed by a religious organization. There are lots of religious service providers in our community, many of whom do a really great job. And so there's no sort of fundamental opposition to partnering with a religious service provider. We just want to make sure that if that is the case, that it's very clear to people that there's no expectation of religious observance if they are going to use this facility, because there is that expectation at some service providers in our community and to really minimize any sort of mixing of religious services being delivered alongside this service as well as sort of over religious iconography or imagery that might make people feel as though this space is only for members of a certain faith or religion. In terms of the long-term day shelter and resource center, I was very excited personally to hear the conversation that took place here on February 9th and to, to see the sort of widespread agreement about working towards this type of service in our community. We strongly support this and it's our understanding that there are likely state and federal resources that will be available for this type of effort. We strongly support this and it's our understanding that there are likely state and federal resources that will be available for this type of effort. And I do want to reiterate that while we are supportive of, uh, investing in a day shelter or a resource center, you know, however we want to. To term it, um, you know, we do reiterate our initial recommendation that the city, uh, consider an overnight shelter. And I know that that proposal, um, you know, I know there are mixed feelings about that and I really understand and respect. The feedback that you all get from residents in your words and needing to, to listen to that. I will say that currently, the only overnight shelter resources in our community are offered by related, by religious organizations. And these are the religious organizations that expect, uh, observance and religious participation from the people who are staying there. Um, and that does make those services inaccessible to people of other faiths or people who might not feel comfortable in that kind of environment. Um, outside of that, the two overnight shelters, or perhaps three now, sorry, that we have in our community. That are religiously run do not participate in the state's data collection process, nor do they participate in the federal data collection process. Um, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in the next slide, um, but just bear that in mind as I talk about some of these state and federal. Sort of reporting processes. So there are two sort of primary ways, um, that the number of, um, homeless people in a community are counted. Um, and sort of where that data goes. Um, the first is an annual count that is mandated by HUD. That is called the Point in Time Survey, and this takes place during the last week of January every year, and it is done at night. Which is part of why the fact that the overnight shelters in our community do not participate in it. Um, is such a considerable challenge to understanding the scope of homelessness and the scope of folks seeking services in our community. The second system, which is a state level system, is called the HMIS. I believe that's the. Homelessness Management Information System or something similar. Um, and people who work at public shelters, case managers who choose to report into the HMIS. Um, funnel information about the people that they're serving into this system. For example, I know New Beginnings participates in this system as a publicly funded youth shelter and youth service provider in the community. Um, and what's really important to understand is that both of these counts are used to determine the resources that are available to individuals. And to the municipality. So based on our most recent information that we received from general assistants. Approximately twenty-six percent of the people who identified as homeless in Lewiston identified as chronically homeless. Um, and that's a really important phrase, because if these people are being entered into the state's HMIS system. And flagged as chronically homeless, there are housing vouchers that are specifically reserved just for that population. That flow from the state that are not being distributed in Lewiston. Because we are not participating in the HMIS system, or at least our adult service providers are not. I know that New Beginnings does, um, but there are, to my knowledge, no adult service providers that participate in this system. Twenty-six percent, that's a quarter, that's over a quarter. I'm not saying that every single person would necessarily receive a voucher and then go on to stable housing. Because as I'm sure you all understand, there are lots of steps even between having the voucher in hand and having a place to stay. But that's a considerable number of people who are currently not receiving services that they're entitled to, and those are not services that need to. Flow from the municipality or municipal resources. Those are services that come directly from the state. So, all that is to say, that as you consider a resource center, we strongly recommend. Investing in case management services to be delivered through that center. Um, now that could be provided via a partnership. The city could potentially allocate funding towards some of those positions. I'm not here to tell you how to do it. But we do think it's very important to invest in case managers who are identifying people in this community. Who are eligible for these types of resources and contributing to the HMIS system. Because at the end of the day, the fact that we're not collecting this data means that losing is leaving resources on the table. That could be flowing into this community to help people who are experiencing homelessness here. Okay, so, moving on, um. The Housing Committee has two roles, based on my understanding, um, and our understanding of the ordinance. The first is to surface and elevate issues that are related to housing and offer our recommendations to the city council. Uh, and the second is to take direction from you all regarding specific housing issues you've already identified as priorities. So that we can study and return recommendations to help guide your work. So in the spirit of collaboration, I want to share with you what we've identified, um, as those priorities. And also get your feedback on what you'd like to see, um, more research from us on, um, as we, of course, continue to partner. On the question of homelessness. Um, so during our inaugural meetings in early twenty twenty, before we knew what we were in, in for. In terms of COVID, um, we cut, we, the Housing Committee went through a process of identifying. And then prioritizing different issues related to housing, and as you can see. This is, um, ranked in order of priority as we voted on them. Homelessness emerged as the number one issue. Um, and as you can see, there's also a low barrier homeless shelter and shower facilities for the homeless that's on this list. I've coded those as blue. Because they're sort of part and parcel of the same topic. So based on this list, the second sort of most significant area that emerged for us. Was around affordable housing and homeownership opportunities, um, specifically and including, um, homeownership opportunities. For new majors or other people who cannot pay interest. Um, so our proposed next area of focus is to continue working on this issue of homelessness and. Would love to hear from you all also if there's more information that we can provide or more ways that we can be useful to you in terms of guiding your work on. On that front, or at least giving you some information to chew on. Um, but that we also shift our focus towards this question of homeownership and strategies to increase homeownership rates in Lewiston. And to make those ownership opportunities accessible to as many different people as possible. So with that, um, I would love to hear from you all. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that. As Counselor Ray said earlier, you can talk to me and not, uh, to this slide, although, um, I do feel, I do believe that these slides. And a written version of this was provided to you beforehand, so hopefully you'll still have information to reference during that time.
Uh, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? So, I, I, help me understand how having the Housing Committee focus on. Bathrooms or shower facilities and even possibly, uh, low barrier shelters within the charge of the Housing Committee. Versus like transitional housing for the homeless versus, versus, uh, shelters.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, so my understanding of the ordinance is that, you know, we're here to. Both, as I said, surface issues that are related to housing that we as representatives from across the community. Identify as important and, you know, we are sort of a cross-sectional group, but we certainly don't represent everybody, nor could we hope to. Which is also why I've come here today to ask if there are topics where it would be helpful for us, um, to research and provide our recommendations back. Um, I will say that services for the homeless in a community, in my opinion, are intimately tied to questions of housing. Um, and in terms of the shower facilities and, um, and a low barrier shelter, I feel that that work has already begun, so I'm not suggesting that we. Continue to spend large swaths of our time thinking about those things. Really, we are focused on moving on to questions of homeownership. And continuing to, such as tonight, provide feedback where it's requested. And by the way, I appreciate, um, the number of people who said, let's hear from the Housing Committee at the last meeting. I, I appreciate you inviting our feedback in this way. Um, but yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I've entirely answered your question, um, but. Overall, there is feeling on the committee that homelessness is obviously a really complicated issue. And we're not going to solve it with one slate of recommendations, nor is it our mandate to, to solve homelessness, but. What we would like to do is continue to be a resource to you on that subject while also turning our focus, as I said, to questions of. Homeownership opportunities for residents of Lewiston.
All right, uh, you know, me personally, I would like to see some energy put into identifying possible transitional housing opportunities. You know, especially when it relates to, to homelessness and, you know, the resource centers are possibility. I think council has some interest there. Uh, and I think what we'll need is areas to put folks in, uh, either transitional or using the voucher system. Uh, so thank you for your response, Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ally, uh, for that great presentation, um, very digestible. I think what, it's kind of related to the mayor's question, um, but it might be helpful to. Have accessible and understanding of the demographics of housing, I guess, might be, um, a way to phrase it. So, um, we just talked about the Rival and one and two family, uh, dwellings versus. Um, transitional housing, which the mayor is referencing, the, the shelters we have, but I also think, um. It, it's helpful, so when I moved to this community, I, um, had no idea how to find housing other than Craigslist. Um, and had no real concept prior that, you know, a duplex is an apartment here, um, things like that. And so I think when we're looking especially at desirable housing for young professionals who are moving into the community. And then thinking about what affordable to each level of person looking for housing means. Um, it might be helpful to identify some of that, I think. In, in a way that I've seen in bits and pieces in the past, but a better understanding of what kind of housing stock we have here. Especially in these times, I think a lot of apartments are very full, and so as folks look to transition into housing. Um, that, that's something I've heard from the, the, the wellness shelters, that there just isn't stock here. And so, um, as we look at new projects, that may be helpful to consider as well. Um, there was one other thing, oh, and then rental registration was such a big thing in my first term. And I've heard nothing since, I feel like, um, so I'm not sure if you have a sense so far of how that's going. I'm sure the clerk's office would have a lot of data to share with us, but very curious about that.
Please, Dennis, because all I know is that I, I, it's my understanding that the time to register is coming upon us again. Um, but that's the extent of my knowledge, so please, Dennis, fill in where I've got lots of gaps.
Sure, no, I, I can provide a very brief update, um, on that, so we. Back in, uh, I think it was June of twenty twenty, if you recall, we did take, um, some action by the city council to waive penalties on rental registration. Um, this was just, um, timing of rolling out rental registration and the pandemic was, uh, couldn't ask for worse timing. Um, I guess is the best way to put it. Um, so we did receive a, a, a fair amount of, of response to that. Uh, of, of licenses that did come in and were processed appropriately. So, uh, Ally is correct, March first is now the, the new deadline of renewals, trying to get this back out. So I've just put together with staff a, a, a short-term strategy of, of really kind of, uh, rejuvenating that. E- energy, getting the renewal notices out, putting some energy back into that, trying to. Um, see if we can get that full registration number up. Um, again, uh, pandemic, I think, really had a severe impact on that, um, in our ability to, to, to drive that home the first time around. So our goal is to do that and really assess and evaluate how things are going in the next couple of months. And likely be coming back to the city council with an update after we've had, um, some time with this, this new push. Um, and bringing this forward. The, uh, the waiver of fees, uh, just so you know, the action the council took was tied. Um, to, uh, to, it basically expired on April first or, or March thirty first. So, so all of that does continue. That's why we felt this is the time to really just continue moving forward. There's no additional action needed by the council. By that, based on the original action, like I said, it had the sunset, um, right in that, that language of, uh, March thirty first. Um, so April first, all of that, uh, just basically starts over, resets to where it was before, where fees can be applied for not. Um, for not complying with the rental registration, so. Um, so ultimately, um, we're, we're pushing it forward, trying to get that, those renewals in, as well as getting those first time folks back on. That, that didn't go the first time around, um, and get everything up and then, um, evaluate over the next probably sixty, ninety days as, as things go forward. If we're not seeing a, uh, major increase or improvement in that area, uh, then we'll likely be coming back to the council for a, for a strategy discussion about how we want to proceed.
That's great, and I think it plays into what I was asking about the housing stock, you know, if we have that registration up and running and functioning the way. I think we envisioned it when it was passed, um, I think that will be a, a great repository for that information as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Uh, I have just a couple more things, uh, can, can you share? So landlords obviously are a big part of housing, and I know there's some representation, uh, within the, the housing committee. Of landlords, but ha- have, have you folks done a much, you know, broader reach out to landlords to identify areas that they may be able to help? Or, uh, that the city might be able to help them, uh, especially for some of the struggling ones?
That's a great question. Um, I will be transparent that I am one of the landlord representatives, um, on the council. Um, I own and live in a triple decker in the downtown, which you can currently see behind me, not much of it, but some of it. Um, so we haven't done any specific outreach, um, I was not aware it was under our purview to do sort of outbound communications. From the Housing Committee, although I'm, would certainly be interested in doing so. I don't want to speak out of turn because I haven't discussed this with the committee, but I will say that. I do know that a lot of landlords are feeling right now very financially squeezed for the same reason that many other people are feeling financially squeezed. Um, and my understanding is that there are not a lot of resources that are available to landlords, including like the ability to apply directly for rent relief. For example, I understand that that always needs to, uh, be done in partnership with the renter, which most of the time works out great. But in the times when it can't work out, my experience is that those tend to be the situations where. Um, there has been a, a challenge in the collaboration in that relationship that may also translate into a lot of unpaid back rent. Which is very difficult, especially for, uh, landlords who maybe don't own a huge volume of property, um, and are operating on a tight margin. So, um, I'm certainly interested in learning more about that, and I'm sure that that population would be interested in any sort of resources available. From the municipality or the state. My understanding is that federally and at the state level, um, those financial resources are not currently available.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's important, everything we can do to help stabilize, uh, the landlord business. Will help, I think, with, with housing and maintaining, uh, a stable housing market. So I just, I do believe that's a piece that should be looked at. I would encourage the committee for, you know, to utilize the staff person that's assigned to you. But also to reach out to, uh, either city administrative Dote or, uh, Doughty. Uh, for guidance on staying within the charge, of course, I, and then you speak of case managers. Which I think is a, I think case manager is a great idea, but I think, uh. To put something like that in place, we would need community, community partners. Uh, I don't believe it would be the role of the city necessarily to provide case managers. And, you know, in my conversations with some landlords, there are times when, you know, uh, someone suffering from mental health or substance abuse. Put into a home and they have a case manager, but once that case manager goes away, that landlord's in trouble in a lot of cases. Because they're dealing with a tenant who, uh, under case management was doing very well. But without that case management, they become an unstable tenant and, uh, at great cost to, I think, landlords sometimes.
Certainly, and I want to also be clear that there are different types of case management, depending on the type of service that you qualify for. So there are case management services, um, for people who are struggling with, with substance use, to my, to my knowledge, as well as to people, um, who need mental health support. Um, I'm talking specifically about case management services for people who are identified as homeless. And need case management support in order to get into some type of stable housing. And I really agree with you, Mayor, regarding the importance of transitional housing, um, and those types of wraparound services. You know, people talk a lot about housing first as a model, and I am generally in agreement with that. I mean, if you don't have a place to spend the night, it's really hard to. You sort out anything else in your life, because your time and resources are spent focusing on your immediate survival needs and how am I going to figure out? Where I'm going to stay, especially on a night in February. I know the temperatures are turning around, knock on wood, but it wasn't so long ago that we were at zero out there. Um, but all that being said, you know, people need additional supports in order to remain successful when they do attain housing. Um, and so I think it's very important and agree with you to figure out ways to get people into transitional housing services and make sure that they have. Continued access to the resources that will allow them to be successful in that housing. And it has also been my experience that, as you hinted at, landlords are more likely to accept vouchers or rent to people. Who they understand have had some sort of history of housing instability. If they're assured that there are services in place to support that person to be successful in that housing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from the council? And then, so before we wrap this up, I just wanted you to reiterate something I think that you shared, uh, nicely, Ally. We, this community is very grateful to our religious base, uh, providers of service. They do an incredible amount of work in this community. And, uh, so I just, I, I think, I think we have to sometimes remind, uh, or share that publicly. That we, we are grateful, uh, so thank you, Ally, and thank you very much to the entire Housing Committee. We realize that you folks are a very active, uh, committee and we appreciate that, because I think, uh. Stable, I continue to provide stabilization to this housing market, plays a significant role in economic development in this community. So, thank you. Plays a significant role in economic development in this community, so, thank you.
Thank you, and if I may, I would add that I completely agree with you. I have great respect for the religious organizations in our community, and if they weren't here, people would have nowhere to spend the night. On a frigid night in February.
Yep, thank you. All right, Ally, uh, thanks again, and, uh, appreciate the good work.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, so, uh, the next item is, uh, to enter into an executive session if I have a motion. A move by Counselor Wa- uh, Counselor Khalid to enter executive session, strengthen to MRSA Title One, Section four oh five. Uh, dash six dash C to discuss an economic development issue of which the premature disclosure of the information with prejudice. The competitive bargaining position of the city. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, move by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Ray. Call the roll.
Counselor from Ward.
Yes.
Counselor from Ward two?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward three?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward four?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward five?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward six?
Yes.
From Ward seven?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Hey, thank you, and for the, uh, folks attending in the public, we do not a- anticipate any votes after the executive session. So the meeting will most probably conclude, so, thank you all, and we'll see you in the executive session.